All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the District of Brown Deer School Board Meeting. This is Tuesday, July twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. I call this meeting to order at six oh two. Yeah, all right. This sounds good. Uh, verification of public notice, meeting has been publicly noticed. Verification of a form. We do have six members of our School Board of Education in attendance this evening. Approval of the agenda. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. Motion has been made. Uh, do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peterson. Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion or can or conversation? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor with raise hand and or aye? Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries uh six two zero. All right, uh, next is our reading of our mission statement. Together with our families and community, we will inspire students to be passionate learners, creative thinkers, and innovative leaders who enrich our world. All right, let's move forward now to our district communication. Our uh superintendent, Dr. Monica Kelsey Brown.
Good evening, board members and community members. Thank you for joining us and joining us this evening. Um, just a few updates of what has been transpiring um for the last few weeks. Um, just wanted to give a regi- uh, update on registration, um. Letting everyone know that registration is now fully online. Um, Park School District. We um currently have four hundred and eight returning families and ninety nine new families. My sentiment is valid.
So ninety nine, so ninety nine returning out of that of?
Four hundred and eight returning, ninety nine new.
All right.
I think this, do you know how this compares to?
And I'm saying families, let me refer back, students.
Okay, students. Okay, when you said families, I'm like.
Right, okay. Returning students and ninety nine new. And that's an update on registration, so slowly trickling in. Um, Amanda has a link at the bottom of her email where families can um connect with her, make an appointment to connect with her if they need to come in for onsite support. Um, and families are taking advantage of that as well.
So, um, any questions about registration?
Maybe this is for Kara, but I ran into a little glitch registering Wyatt because I don't get anything mailed to my house that I live there. What is my work on? Maybe for any parent that needs to know this. It says I'm required to download mail that came to my house. I don't have any mail that comes to my house.
You could use your um, your mortgage payment, use your mortgage payment. Your mortgage payment, the one you probably do it electronically?
You can download your V I C.
And your mortgage payment.
Download water.
I was talking about parents were having these names.
Should we, should we?
Yeah, we're gonna cut updates to families, uh, reminding their focus is new, right? So I'm probably expecting a mailing, uh, which we're obviously not doing anymore. And so we're gonna send out something saying do not expect a mailing. It's all online at this point. And if you have additional questions or need for work, it's still reach out for now.
Thieming Lee, I've seen those emails and all the things that you recommended, you know, and sent for that. But people still have questions. I think on the parent page, we don't want registration and a lot of people.
Can we?
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Brown, is this a way for us to be able to have like a Q and A? Link to where they get ready to register, be like any like frequently asked questions? I don't have any, I don't have a paper bill and you can just turn around and say, hey, just download your stuff from whatever.
You can say.
I already have it doing.
What can we use? To prove?
There is already a sheet on that.
That, that's there. I'm just saying for people that do electronic.
But I'm saying downloading electronic bill could be added to that if it's already there.
Does anybody know whether or not, when you get those electronic, do you have the option to be able to forward? That? Because then that'd be an easy way to be like, I just forward that PDF. I was just asking this stuff because I was like, hey.
That is like an attachment. Okay, thank you. I will have to dive into that.
Well, I, I do imagine, I don't know, I'm like missing something here. Registration, you said we have four hundred and eight returning students that have registered and ninety nine new students. So that's about five hundred and seven-ish students. Um, what is this for elementary school? Is this for the total?
The whole of this higher district.
Probably third.
What happened? According to Amanda, we're further ahead. We're further ahead this year than we were last year.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Uh, but they, they started trickling in.
Yeah, yeah, I do definitely understand, um, but I was just curious how it compared to last year.
So we're, we're ahead in comparison to last year.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, any other questions, registration? All right, uh, we are continuing to work on our strategic planning process. Um, teams are continuing to meet. Um, Ms. Ramos will be meeting with her team on tomorrow, so we're still putting the continuous improvement plan. Thursday, Thursday, thank you. Continuous improvement plan, um, together to share um, share that information with the board at our board retreat.
The time, Ms. Ramos? Nine to eleven or nine to ten?
Nine to ten thirty.
Nine to thirty.
Uh, we were uh originally scheduled for a leadership session with um Jeannie Marie from CISA six on July thirty first. But we're all leaving. Are we going to Ohio? And there are other staff will be out, so we'll reschedule that. But we'll be in a really good place to share um the continuous improvement plan with you at the strategic, at the board meeting uh, on Friday, August fourth, here at the A and C. Um, a group, so myself and a group of instructional staff, coaches, principals, assistant principals. We all went to the Professional Learning Community Conference in Madison. Um, a couple of weeks ago, uh, it was hosted by Solutions, Solution Tree, and it was a, it was a, it was an amazing conference. Uh, as you well know, we already uh implemented P L Cs in our um school district. Um, and so we were able to learn what is it that we need to do additionally or even, or either different uh, to level up, if you will, in terms of our P L C process. So that was well attended, including the new coach that was hired at the middle school. Um, she also joined us. Her name is Claire. So um, that was, it was just a wonderful event and it's always um, I love just learning and growing with our team. So we learned a lot and was able to bring back a lot of information. So that was good. Um, we are in the process of reviewing student parent handbook, so we will be bringing that to you for approval at this more than likely the special board meeting, um, in August, the first one, in August for approval, the student parent handbook. Uh, continuing to uh prepare for a new teacher week is pretty much solidified. So um, Dr. Vito, I will, uh, we will look to you to open up for us on that Thursday of new teacher week and then.
What date are we moving with?
Teacher week is.
The fourteen to the eighteen, so only fourteen?
Right.
What's that?
Your time will be uh, eight thirty at the Middle High School L R C.
Correct. Cool.
Uh, and then we're preparing for Welcome Back Week where we have our wonderful kickoff, which Dr. Vito, we would love to have you for that as well on that Wednesday. We do have um our uh professional speaker, professional learning opportunity. Uh, we invited Cornelius Minor, who's the author of We Got This, um Equity Access and the Quest to Be Who Our Students Need Us to Be.
No, that's a good one. Do we buy copies of that or is he gonna bring copies for us to be able to potentially buy in that time?
We are purchasing copies for all of our staff. That's gonna be wonderful. And the work continues. As we plan for that upcoming school year, just a reminder, our Thursday of school is September first. And on September first, we will only have our transition grades, day five, sixth grade and ninth grade, but all teachers and staff are required to report um, on their Fridays. So take day five, sixth grade and. On Thursday of school is September one for those transition grades, right? And we're still working on, Donna has secured, if you recall, last year we did our community truck. Um, we invited the community to come in and engage in eating. We all like to eat. Um, so we'll be doing that again this year and the date is uh, what day does that community truck? Uh, this is twenty fourth is the community trucks. They'll be right out here in the.
So there are Welcome Back Week then?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at uh, the kid on the twenty third. So the twenty third is gonna be, but so twenty fourth will be the day the truck is there.
Right.
Could um, Ms. Ross, could we, I was gonna say, Ms. Ross, could you uh type something up and send it to all the board members so we know that? I mean, could we see this on here? Then I'm circling the twenty third, I'm circling the twenty fourth.
For you to um create an flyer, not to send.
Mr. Krieger's gonna send it to us, okay.
That is thirty to one, eleven thirty to one.
Also to lunch. Thank you so much.
That's why we're gonna get ready. That's why I'm saying we're, we're throwing a lot of dates and times out. That's the reason why I'm saying, you know, if we could get a copy of uh, what that whole week thing is gonna look like or those two weeks and times for everything and just send it out. It sounds good. Thank you so much.
It's the twenty ninth.
It's the twenty ninth? Okay, see, we'd been off.
It goes wrong.
Wait a minute. Excuse me, I'm sorry, Tuesday, August twenty ninth, eleven thirty to one thirty. Food truck, lunch, the Novak Family Fieldhouse parking lot.
That's cool.
Cash or cards accepted.
Okay.
It's camouflage day, so wear your camo.
Okay. All right, so yeah, so yeah, so Ms. Krieger's gonna turn around, board members, and she'll, she'll turn and send us an email letting us know the dates and the times for the specific activities or whatever.
That'd be wonderful. And that is my report.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for Dr. Kelsey Brown? All right, so now we come to our part of our meeting with our public comments, um. Individuals that would like to make a comment, it would have to be, it's something that is actually on our agenda for our meeting. Uh, you have the opportunity as a community member to speak. You have three minutes. Uh, if you do, you need to state your name and your address, your browser address in order to be recognized. Uh, you can do this right now. Uh, I don't know if we have anybody that's online. Uh, if you're online right now, uh, you'd like me to do it, please go into our chat and let us know that your name and your address and that you do have a uh comment that you'd like to make. Again, it's a comment and not a question. Um, and for us being to do that, and again, a three minute time limit. Uh, what I will do as customary, I will give it another minute for if there's anybody that potentially walks in and or that is online that would like to make a public comment. But during that time, while we're waiting for that, um, you're about to turn the chat. Okay, all right, Ms. Robinson is actually about monitoring the chat. Uh, I'd just like to be able to say that, you know what? I hope everybody's enjoying this wonderful weather that we're having right now. I mean, it is absolutely, it's absolutely wonderful right now, the way it is. Like last night, I went to the Brewers game and it was just gorgeous.
Yeah.
It was just gorgeous. I mean, you know, there, nothing, there's nothing better than Wisconsin in the summer. And that's why I always say, like, so many people always try to leave and become snowbirds. Well, one day, hopefully, I can become a snowbird and be out of here. Uh, when it, when it gets cold or whatever, you know, our pride speaks in. But uh, you know, in the summertime, I wanna hang out.
Where we go, it won't be too cold.
Definitely, right?
I just wanna add with this beautiful weather, they have added an additional community vibes.
An additional one?
August.
Yes.
I can, um, so I know that we had the, the one that's gonna supposed to be so.
There's another one.
So, so now August second and then August sixteen?
Yes.
So cigarette break is the second?
Yes.
And then the, the?
Sixteenth is Eddie.
Eddie Busch.
Right. Back to back. So August second and August one?
Sixteen.
That's the regular date.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I think, you know what? I know, um. B and Lisa, you guys are both still on the committee, right? What food trucks do we got coming?
For the um cigarette break, Danny told me just say she had tots on the street.
Okay.
And then that same ice cream truck. And for Eddie Busch, we have the barbecue, smooth bar barbecue and the ice cream truck.
Perfect, all right. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we hope, hope we pray. All right, uh, do we have, I see a chat.
That's from me.
Okay.
Nobody else.
Okay, so. All right, everyone. So now, uh, we don't have anyone with public comments. Uh, let's continue to move forward. Let's go move on to item number four, our consent agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes of the June thirteen, twenty twenty three special board meeting, June twenty seven, twenty twenty three, regular board meeting, the schedule of voucher payments via check, A C H and wire transfers in the amount of one million, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-five cents in the general checking account and the food service account, including funds ten, twenty-one, twenty-seven, thirty-nine, forty-seven, forty-nine, fifty, seventy-two and eighty as of July twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three, school safety drills they presented tonight.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ashley. All right, a motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion or conversation? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, we raise hand and or aye? Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries six two zero. All right, let's move on to our next item, item number five, uh, five A. Is that uh, that gonna be Mr. Klimic or Ms. Jackson?
Uh, Mr. Klimic.
Okay, Ms. Klimic.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, we are, as you know, in the throes of hiring season. I mean, it's summer and busy or I used to tell people that it's busy for the office, so um, Gina, Jackson, and I, and our team has done a really great job in trying to get uh these positions filled. We have a number of uh new hires this evening. Um, I'll just run down the list real quick. We have Madeline Artson, who will be a first grade teacher. Alyssa Beller, um, who will serve as an occupational therapist. Beth Clement, who will serve as a fourth grade teacher. Jessamine Redo Prenshaw as a special education teacher. Chelsea Vickery as a second grade teacher. Claire Hiresman as a instructional coach, middle school. Uh, Tricon Martin will serve as our college career readiness teacher. Uh, Teresa Ortell uh as an occupational therapist part-time. Uh, Isaac Peterson as a high school agent. And Mia Radke as a social scientist. And then just a couple of notes on two of those positions, uh, one of which is, uh, Mr. Martin, as I mentioned, is a college career readiness teacher. This is the grant funded position through the ARPA uh, uh, of, of school time grant that the middle high school received. That was the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant and one of the things that was budgeted for was for this position. And so he has a limited term, um, uh, those decided with this to, to cover the time of the grant. And that'll be what he'll, it'll be important. He's, he, he will be starting uh, to approve this and he working, getting ready for the summer to get um think program ready, program ready so he can work with kids in the fall. Um, the college board is helping them get ready for um their life after.
So, Mr. Klimic, is that uh, is that a position that is going to continue throughout the twenty-three, twenty-four school year?
Correct.
And is this a full-time position?
It is full-time, um, full-time, but it's, it is only during this grant window. The grant, um, the money uh ends this on September thirty. So it'll be from now until then.
Okay.
So now the question I have is, of course, because the things that you just mentioned are things that our students can continuously benefit from. So is there potential that it could be extended?
Uh, we wouldn't have grant funding for it, so that would be something that you would have to see, you know, if the district had the resources to. Um, I mean, how it can happen if we start to look at the budget for twenty-four to twenty-five.
All right, any other questions in relationship to that? Cause I know that that's one of the ones that you, and you gave us a little bit more information or whatever. Anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Klimic, in relationship to that position?
Right. And then the other one is the um part-time occupational therapist. Um, this is a position that's been contracted through CISA for years and years and years and years as a, as a part-time therapist. And we actually, um, and this is through um, Ms. Ramos's, um, new sharing responsibility of looking at it and bring someone in to do that role ourselves. Um, so this is a point six, so they'll be here three days a week. Um, and the cost for the, uh, so it's not benefit eligible, so it's basically salaries and training costs. And this will be less expensive than what we pay CISA.
Now, this O T is only for the middle and high school. Uh, we don't have any need in elementary school?
No, no, then you, uh, we had Laura Rathman who retired this year. She was at the elementary school and now Alyssa Beller, who's on your hiring list, she's the second one on the list. She's again, as the full-time occupational therapist.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If this position is point six F T, is that consistent with the contracted service that was provided by CISA?
Yes.
All right.
Uh, any other questions before we ask, ask for a motion? All right, would someone like to make a motion?
Dr. Vito, I will make a motion. Um, I'm just trying to find out if I can do all of these at one time or because we have different positions.
We can do it all at one time and just do all the elementary school, then do the middle school, then then.
Mr. Martin is the only one that has a different start date. Uh, everybody else will be starting at the beginning.
The start dates are not listed.
Right, I just said for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, that's the reason why, uh, Mr. Klimic, I think we were just gonna break it up, elementarys, then the middle, then the high school.
And there is one, Claire Hurstman is just middle. So can I do her with the middle schools? Or will I have to do her separate and it'll be four motions then?
Well. No, I mean, she, that's, that's not, she thought it's middle school. But just do her by herself then for the middle school, just do.
Five, seven, all's go across all.
Yep.
So with all that said, Dr. Vito, I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Madeline Arneson, um, Alyssa Beller, Beth Clement, and Jessamine Redo Prenshaw as elementary.
Yeah.
And Chelsea Vickery as elementary school teachers for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
All right, thank you very much. Motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Megan. Motion is made and seconded. Uh, any discussion and or conversation? Hearing and seeing none, uh, all in favor, raise hand and or aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries six to zero for our new hires of Madeline, Alyssa, Beth, Yasmin and Chelsea. All right.
Dr. Vito, I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Claire Hurstman as a middle school instructional coach for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
All right, a motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Megan. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, we raise hand and or aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries six two zero. We welcome Claire.
Dr. Vito, I would further like to make a motion for the hiring of Tricon Martin and Teresa Ortell for the middle high school for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
All right, thank you very much. Motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Megan. Motion has been made and taken it. Any questions or conversation? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, we raise hand and or aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries six to zero, so we welcome Quan and Teresa.
And finally, Dr. Vito, I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Isaac Peterson and Mia Radke for the high school for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four spring.
All right, thank you very much. A motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Megan. Motion is made second. Any conversations? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, we raise hand and or aye? Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries six to zero, so we welcome Isaac and Mia. So let's go on now to our item five B, resignations. Mr. Klimic?
And we do have a handful of resignations this evening. Uh, we have Felicia Lucre and Mackenzie Wellack in the elementary schools. And then Brendan Burns, Holly Nelson, Kathleen O'Connell and Erica Probst at ICE.
Ooh, all right, well, we always say that we always hate to see uh, our individuals leave our family, but wish them luck. So would someone like to be able to make a motion for the resignations?
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Felicia Lucre uh, as elementary school teacher effective June eighth. Also, the resignation of Brendan Burns as high school chemistry teacher, also effective June eighth. Holly Nelson as high school instructional coach, effective June eighth. And Kathleen O'Connell as high school math teacher, also effective June eighth.
Then you can do the other ones for the Julys, the July thirty-first and twenty-first. Then we can put them all together, since, since we already set the dates for them. Yep.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Erica Probst as high school assistant principal, effective July twenty-first, pending receipt of liquidated damages. And also the motion to per the resignation of Mackenzie Wellack as an elementary school teacher, effective July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, pending receipt of liquidated damages.
All right, motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Megan. Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion?
For Claire, use one motion.
Yes.
I just have one comment, uh, of Mrs. Lucre and her heartfelt letter. Uh, I mean, do we try? Yes, thank you.
This Probst is on.
Yes, it's. Is she on? Yeah, Erica?
Yeah, see, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the board and all of my colleagues. Um, it's bittersweet to say goodbye after nineteen years, but I just appreciate the opportunity and I will take all of my memories and learning with me and I just wanted to thank everyone. So thank you and I'm most appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we had a motion and a second. Uh, any other uh discussion? Like we always say, must a falcon always a falcon. We wish everyone on this list well on their next uh endeavor. And uh, hopefully we'll be able to see them soon and be able to keep in contact. So with that being said, all in favor, we raise hand and or aye? Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries naturally six two zero. All right, let's move on to now, um. All right, so now let's move along to our approval of leave of absence.
Yes, we have, we have one staff member, Chris Johnson, who um joined us this year as a special education teacher, uh, who has requested a leave of absence for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year to professional development. Um, and that's for permission to that. And we've done that in the past, that, you know, is a, they it is board policy and district policy to allow for a one-year leave with court approval. That does provide some job protection. Uh, and then if um, uh, we'll reach out to her in the early spring and confirm whether or not she's interested in returning. If she isn't, she'll have a uh, wait for it.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Klimic. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to approve Ms. Johnson's uh leave?
Um. So let me know how this should work because there seems to have been some questioning on Ms. Johnson. So is that something we need to discuss before we do the motion to approve?
Maybe move into a closed session for this?
Yeah.
Yeah. We have to.
So I would like to table that one till after closed session.
Right, then so we'll table this and then we'll be able to bring it back into open session.
For vote.
Before a vote. All right. Let's go on to item five D, budget update. Mr. Klimic?
Good evening again. Um, all of you can have a spreadsheet at your desk. So I thought, we didn't provide you with our normal sentence report yet because that, not everything is posted um to, you know, we're still getting those last minute bills in and trying to make sure things going right this year and making sure things been fully adjusted. So this is my version of what's been blocked in and what we're, you know, we're kind of making things around because we wanna see how is our fiscal year ending. Um, as we, that's the biggest part is, well, I was preparing for the auditors to come in next month, but also uh, we have a deadline of July thirtieth, which is over the weekend. So really, basically it's Friday. If the board wants to do a transfer to Fund Forty-Six, and as you know, last year we had allocated some funds that due to um bank account issues, we didn't actually get to make that uh in time. So I wanted to um, uh, bring this to you tonight so that if you wanted to report with something, we can. So if you remember last year's budget or this year's budget when we started, because we had actually, I created for you kind of a deficit budget, not the greatest. So if you remember last year's budget or this year's budget when we started, because we had actually created for you kind of a deficit budget, not the greatest thing in the world, but it allowed you to kind of see like if we needed to move to those funds. Uh, as it turns out, we still have a positive year overall. So if you look at the chart, um, you want to start with fund twenty-seven because we kind of work our way backwards because fund twenty-seven leads into fund ten. Um, we looked at our, you know, you look at our expenses, um, and for a number of reasons, we were, we were under, um, budget by about three hundred thousand dollars. And so that provided us to reduce the, um, well, we had, we had an increase in Medicaid revenue. That was plus. We had increased the state aid.
Is that in here? Is this the, the, the new act nineteen? Is that in here right now?
That, that's for next year. That's, yeah, this is just, we, because our spending went up last year, we, we ended up getting more and again, they always try to predict. They'll say it's going to be twenty-eight cents or thirty percent, but if, you know, they provide a certain amount of money and then they see what happens with how districts spend in special education, then they reallocate it. So we actually ended up with, with more. You can see under the revenue side, um, uh, where I think we budgeted eight hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, state revenue, we ended up with nine hundred eighty-five thousand. So that was a, that was a plus in that area. So all in all, we, we end up, um, having our revenue, um, our, our revenue increased. Our, our expenses decreased to a net of about three hundred thousand dollars, three fifty-four to be exact. So that lessened our fund twenty-seven transfer from fund ten. And then in addition to that, we did have some other savings in fund ten. Um, some examples are that we had budgeted, uh, again, I told you, we budgeted two million dollars for opening enrollment out because that number continued to climb as we were approaching those kind of slot budget and it did end up locking basically at one point nine two million. So I had eighty thousand dollars there. We had a number of staffing positions that, um, remain, um, unfilled during the course of the year. We had supervisor positions, like rest of our recess supervisor, we're hard to come by. Again, some of our, uh, we had a couple of teaching positions that, um, we had transitions during. We had administrative positions that had transitioned during the year. So we had savings, um, that we were able to realize. And so all in all, uh, when you add in all of the things that we're, you know, what we've been able to post so far, what we're expecting to post, um, most of the posting has to do with the revenue side. As one example, the last chunk of, uh, tax revenue will come on August fifteenth. So we'll, we'll that, but we won't actually see that cash until August fifteenth, and that's one and a half million dollars. Um, and then we go through all the other pieces and you can see that, um, our revenues, uh, this year were at twenty-five point four million dollars. Basically right on budget and that was with us not using as much of S three as I had planned. So I was able to claim less to, um, to save some of that money for next year to help our budget situation. And then our, our expenses were down as well. So, um, we went down to twenty-four point eight million dollars. Now, uh, this does include, that twenty-four point eight million does include, um, the roof project, which we had talked about going to deficit for, it was two hundred thousand dollars for the library roof section. And then the unexpected expense of the tax refund that we had due to the two hundred forty-one thousand is all part of that. So even with that, we end up with approximately a five hundred eighty-four thousand dollar surplus. Again, this is still loose. There's things that are going to change. It might go down a little bit, so I'm, I want to be a little cautious about what we might do. But I think at the very least, we should be able to, uh, transfer if the board wants to. They could transfer a quarter of a million dollars in the fund forty-six, or I'd say up to three hundred thousand dollars, stay in, stay in that range. Um, gives us a little bit of pad yet in fund ten. And then, um, and then that, we could do that this week and that'll be part of our, um, expenses for this year. Um, and then we won't have to go into a deficit. But you know, we could just leave the money that we built up in fund ten that we did last year. We'll leave it there and that may be something we'll need to potentially tap, um, not necessarily this year in twenty-three, twenty-four, but twenty-four, twenty-five could be a situation where those funds could be utilized. So, um, so that's my recommendation, but I will put in the further conversation. So it was another positive year. Uh, I wish I could tell you that, uh, I don't think I'm doing poorly in budgeting, but I think there's just a lot of things that changed throughout the year. And like you said, we had, you know, openings you can't predict. And I feel like if I, I always get nervous when I give you guys the budget in October, because I feel like I've, I'm trying to be tight and, 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 you know, be conservative, but also use as much funding as we can. I don't try to hold it back purposefully. And it just seems like we have some, we have had extra money again and a lot of it again. And so I guess another example, um, teachers on call, um, we had a lot of, you know, needs for subs, but we didn't get a, like you build our teachers on call. So I had a hundred thousand dollars across the three buildings and I think we used fifty thousand dollars. So again, that's another big chunk of money you can't predict that it is, uh, it's going to get used. So, um, so we'll continue to refine the budget and each year we're going to get tighter and tighter. I am feeling, um, but, um, but at least again, this year we, we have a benefit of, of a smaller than last year, but it's still a, a, a nice surplus.
Yep, and we'll definitely turn around and we'll take that especially in light of your projections for the following twenty-four, twenty-five year when things really, really, really get tight. So anything that we're able, that we're be able to, uh, be able to save? Is always, is always a good thing in relationship to that. Board members, questions for Mr. Klemig in relationship to this upcoming, uh, well, the end of the year budget? Yes, Miss Megan?
So is it two hundred and fifty thousand that we want to transfer or three hundred thousand?
I, I leave it up to you guys, what you want to do. I've given you a little bit of a range. Yeah, uh, you can, I mean, you guys should pick the number.
Right, we'll pick the number, but it's the range.
I'm just, you want to go a little higher? Because you'll see it, it'll, you know, it'll be kind of a little over half, a bit of fund forty-six, a little less than half, then we'll stay in fund balance or it'll be one of the others. So I would, I would just say it would be nice to put some more money in there. Um, in our district, it doesn't have a huge financial impact because, um, the money is going, the money is treated the same way for us, whether or not we put it into fund forty-six or whether we spend it out of fund ten at some point. Um, some districts that lose money when they spend more, um, they need to be careful about how they do it. So they try to time and put things in fund forty-six. Because when you, um, not to get too much into it, but just that you do understand that there is the shared cost formula, which is how equalization aids is determined. And so they look at what is the district spending and it's of its own money or its own money and state money. And when you put money into fund forty-six, the money is expensed and that counts for shared costs. When you, when you expense out of fund forty-six, it's no effect at all. So it's nice for districts that need to, like, throw a bunch of money in, take a hit on aid and then they can use that money in later years without any impact. For us, it doesn't make any difference whether we put the money in fund forty-six or whether we use a fund ten. It's, it's going to look the same for us. So as long as we still don't have a ten-year plan that we're, we're still waiting on that, that will be coming this summer or, you know, September-ish. Um, we have to have the things on the plan that we use money on. So I don't want to throw it all out there. If something comes up that we need to address, we can address it on a fund ten, but the money we have access to because our fund balance is, um, is moving up significantly. So I, again, it's hard to calculate until everything is entered, but I'm guessing we will be somewhere in the twenty-three to twenty-four percent range for fund balance, which when I started on the board back in twenty-twelve, we were at nine. So it's a huge jump. We're well within district, um, uh, district board policy of twelve to eighteen percent. And it just helps show the financial strength of, of the district. And again, it's one of the factors that lets us prevent, prevents us from having to do short-term borrowing.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. We, we used to borrow in the past, so this is excellent news. So thank you, thank you for your your fiscal responsibility.
And it's also, um, pretty optimistic that our enrollment is growing. It feels like it's trending upward, um, too as well, so.
And I'm careful on that because, you know, I don't know it, but we were, I mean, we at least, we stayed flat in this. Again, this year, even if we're flat, we're going to still see a huge increase because of the three-year average. So the next year, well, we'll see what this year comes and then I can find to my predictions for the following.
And you just use the key word projections because that's exactly what a budget is. Oftentimes people miss that point, that you try your best to come as close as possible conservatively um, to what we believe actual will be. But it's all just a projection. And as long as you're able to explain those variances away, that will then also make your budget be okay for, for you to work as hard and diligently as you are to ensure that you are coming as close to actual as we can. I just needed to publicly say that we surely appreciate you in this role of the chair handling this, this major budget, because this is a major budget.
And I know you just looked at it. Uh, if you do have any questions about the different lines, it's not as detailed as the, as the treasure report, but you are still seeing them by, by object. Um, so, uh, I know one thing that I think people asked about last time was, um, fund ten, the other, uh, the nine hundred series of, um, of, uh, of objects which are fees and dues and fees basically, um, this is some five hundred thirty, five hundred fifty-three percent. Uh, one of those is the two hundred forty-one thousand dollar, um, tax.
That's where the.
That's where that goes. Um, in addition to that, I, when I looked at it today, because I wanted to make sure I could answer the questions, uh, we did have about forty thousand dollars this, this, um, applied there. Really should have been C payment. So those are going to move to purchase services and they'll be on the ship there. The other piece that's pretty big though is that we had, we had a, a significant, um, amount of legal fees this year compared to previous issues. Uh, no losses to anybody consulting fees for a number of issues that we had to face during the year. So, uh, that was much higher than off.
They don't, we're, we're, or again?
Number of issues we had to address during this, during the course of the year.
Hopefully we don't have those, uh, next year because fees just went up.
They sure did.
Fees just went up, so yeah.
Alright, if you do have any other questions at some point, you can feel free to fire up email, but otherwise I would, uh, I'm happy to take the board's recommendation of whatever number you'd like to hunk in that motion for, uh, transfer of fund forty-six and we will make sure it happens this week and it happens.
So what puts us in a better position, the two fifty or the three? For next year?
It doesn't matter. It's, I mean, it, it, it's really, it's, it's just one's going to be a little bit more in the fund balance than, or, or what you guys feel like. We have two fifty in there now, which, which is built up to over two sixty. So this at least matches us. We'll have about a half million dollars or it'll be somewhere between a half million and five hundred fifty thousand dollars. It's really, it's not a big, I'm not giving you a big range to choose from, so it's.
Oh, it's forty-six, the one that's accruing that interest like that?
Well, they all, they all do because they're invested in that. But I'm just saying like that, now that interest rates are as high as they are at two hundred fifty thousand dollars sat there for a year and didn't earn much, but this year, um, it's obviously grown, uh, like I said, I think we get ten thousand dollars in interest, but other accounts we have are earning fifteen thousand dollars in interest upon, so.
So which one is earning in the highest?
They're all invested in the same. They're all at, um, and they're invested in their, uh, investment series.
Okay.
Products, so it's getting the highest interest.
Alright, any other questions for Miss Klemig? Or go to a motion? Um, okay, so if we do the two, so Kevin, so we do two fifty, we'd actually by the end of the year, we'd be talking about two sixty. We did the three hundred, it'd be about like three fifteen?
By the end of next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we have, well, again, and then if we spend it, you know, that, that will be the thing that we'll talk about. Once we have that plan developed and if there are some things, you know, once we get the, the plan from, uh, PSI, we, and we actually develop here's our ten-year plan, the board may decide if something happened, maybe pulling from that fund, start doing some of these projects and.
Is there a penalty if we were to pull?
Oh, that, once you put it in there, that's, it just has to be used for things on your plan.
So would it be more advantageous for us to do the three hundred rather than the two fifty?
It, it doesn't really matter because if it's, maybe we don't have the plan yet. So I mean, until we have the plan, that money can't be touched. So we will have a plan within the next sixty to ninety days. So make sure we can do that. But again, it, it from a, from a, how does it impact the state aid or anything like that? It doesn't, it doesn't impact us one way or the other. This way, we're going to put money in from this past school year. If we end up, if we end up, uh, spending money out of fund ten, it's going to count for this current school year.
So the only reason I'm asking is, is so that when, when we make, whoever makes the motion, they put the dollar amount in there and stuff. So I'm saying, so should it be the three of, in your recommendation, would it be better for us to do two fifty or the three hundred?
The three, three hundred is going to give more interest, right?
That's what I was saying. The three hundred would give us like about three fifteen, the two fifty would give us like two sixty at the end of the.
I, I'll happily recommend the three hundred thousand.
Okay, alright, so three hundred thousand. Alright, so, uh, would somebody like to make?
They're all, um, any money at WIS, which is through PMA, they're all invested in the same piece. So it doesn't matter which fund they're in. Whether, right now I've got four million dollars in our general fund and that's where this money is going to come from. So it's only, uh, clerical from fund ten, fund forty-six. It's in the same interest-bearing, um, investment product. So it doesn't, it doesn't change anything about where it is. But it will help fund forty-six grow a little faster. So we'll have more money in that in our future expense, so.
Alright, so whoever would like to be able to make the motion, we would say we recommend the three hundred thousand. Alright, would someone like to make a motion?
Um, Dr. Beato, I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of three hundred thousand dollars from fund ten to fund forty-six for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three?
It's due, we're doing it for our last year's budget.
Thank you, for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year.
Alright, thank you very much, Miss Megan. A motion has been made. We have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Miss Peterson. Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any other discussion? Here you can see none, all in favor, will raise hand and or eye?
Eye.
Any opposed? Here you can see, mostly carries six to zero.
Thank you, thank you. And we'll move to three hundred thousand dollars.
Alright, let's go over to item F. A notice of academic standards, uh, Dr. Kesselberg?
You, you know, this is standard operating procedure on state law requires, uh, that the district provides, uh, parents and guardians involved in both with a notice of academic standard. Uh, the document was uploaded to Word book. And so we are seeking your approval this evening, um, for our twenty-three, twenty-four notice of academic standards uh, for the upcoming school year. And please note, uh, that the name, uh, curriculum director's name has been changed from Dr. Harrison to Dr. Glass. Notice that. So again, it's standard operating procedure. We do, we must in this every year. Do you have any questions?
Alright, would someone like to be able to make a motion?
I would like to approve the annual notice of academic standards for the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-four school year as presented.
Thank you very much, Miss Robinson. A motion has been made. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Miss Ashley. Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Here you can see, uh, all in favor will raise hand and or eye?
Eye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries six to zero. Keep looking back at the thing, thinking it's potentially that, uh, uh, Director, uh, Smith may, okay, alright, thank you very much. Alright, let's go on to our next item is item G, approval of annual notice of educational options.
Yes, and I will, uh, take that one on and simultaneous to the notice of academic standards, we are also required to, uh, present the annual notice of educational option, uh, which remains the same as it was last year. Uh, you know, note here of the schools that we have, our elementary school, paperwork and fifth, I mean, a high school, sixth and twelfth, and we still offer a alternative, um, opportunity for students in our academy of learning. And then all other programs are listed, uh, below our school sites and, um, we are seeking approval for permission of this document this evening from the board as well.
Alright. Someone like to make a motion?
So Dr. Beato, I'd like to make a motion to approve the annual notice of educational options for the twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year as we do it tonight.
Alright, thank you very much, Miss Ashley. Motion has been made. Uh, we have a second? Alright, thank you very much, Miss Robinson. Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, clarity, um, on the options that are listed. What's the difference between Start College Now and the early college credit program? They sound much like the same, other than the grades that.
Um, it's a great question. Uh, let me see clarity from our guidance officer mouth, also the board email, on the difference between, between the two. Um, I know for early college credit program that the street of the words, the cost of the early college cred- credit program, that College Now.
And I believe one is for tech school, the other one is for, well, early college credit, we generally see for, um, we've had a number of those like, or, you know, Milwaukee or the guys, I think the third now is being ready to see the way that we do not get compensation on the, we do get some money back for, for universities.
Yeah, and that is correct. So Start College Now allows high school students the opportunity to take college courses at Wisconsin Technical College, the two, the two-year institutions.
Okay, so if those are.
And they do have to apply.
If those are the distinctions, I think it will be helpful to have that in there. Because it is, this is what's provided to families, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
We can add that. So what's your pleasure added and for approval with the revision to add this language?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, oh, Miss Robinson, you, you good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, somebody may make a motion?
We already did.
I mean, okay, that was a discussion. I'm sorry. All, all in favor will raise hand and or eye? I mean, okay, that was a discussion, I'm sorry. All in favor, we raise hand and or eye?
Then we have to change the motion to approve the.
Okay, with the amendment part, okay, so let's let's start motion back over again, please.
Apparently amendment.
Yeah.
Yes, believe it.
Yeah, you can start.
I would like to make a motion to approve the annual notice of educational options for the twenty twenty three. Twenty twenty four school year. With the amendments and mentioned tonight.
Alright. Alright, motion has been made. Do we have a second? You've got to take this.
Second. I wrote Dorothea, that's my wife. You mix up her names.
See, okay, so you know what, so now I don't feel bad. Yeah, you should feel a lot better now, right? See the cap, see the smile on Kevin's face? So now everybody's got pass.
And Robinson, you.
I'm sending it. Alright, uh, any discussion, any further discussion? Here you see not all in favor with raised hand and or eye? Any opposed? Here you see that mostly carries six to zero. Alright. Let's go on now to our next item is. Uh, item. Okay, item H, approval of the contracted services.
Yes, I can take that one on, and as you know, we partner with CISA one. Every year to provide certain services to our school district. You will notice the services on the contract on page three. Not a lot has changed, other than we have. Decided to, so new connections is one of our alternative programs. And we are going to, we used to have two seats at. New connections to the tune of ninety one thousand dollars ish, and we're gonna work really hard to have a seat. At, well, hopefully we want to send eight students to alternative sites, however. We moved it from two to one in our partnership with CISA for the upcoming school year. Now, we do not, if we do not use the seat, not that.
Okay, so that, so that forty five thousand eight hundred bucks we would have.
We only pay.
Okay. That's strange. We're in a wrong business. Alright.
We pay that.
Yep, the ones that, remember last year we paid was like, was it almost like ninety two thousand?
I'm just saying, like, what if you spent that much doing them in general?
Okay. Yes, just one.
On this contracted services, the last line for occupational therapist. Was that position not eliminated by the hire on this? It says that it was eliminated, this is a position, is this position that it's eliminated? I'm on this seat that won contracted services, but I printed out from Board docs. It shows the last line as occupational therapist. For fifty three thousand two thirty. Oh, okay, I printed this off Board docs. Oh, it was removed, okay, I apologize, my copy has it on it still, so thank you.
Good question.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, any other questions for the CISA one contract?
Excellent question, Ms. Walker. Alright. Matt, would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty three, twenty four contract for Cooperative Educational Service. Agency number one, CISA number one. In the amount of ninety three thousand, seven hundred forty three dollars. And fifty three cents as presented.
Alright, thank you very much, Miss Peterson. Motion has been made, second? Right, thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? You can see not all in favor with raised hand and or eye? Any opposed? There you see, motion carries six two zero. Alright, let's go on to item. Approval of tennis court repair project, I believe that would probably be, Mr. Russ?
We'll also have Gerald.
Is Gerald on?
Yes. For questions and comments on this. Um, he, and Gerald can correct him. We are looking for the board to approve for us to get our beautiful tennis courts. In a little bit better condition by sealing, resealing all the beautiful cracks that we have and restructuring the tennis courts that we have. And allow redoing the whole courts until we can figure out what we are going to do proceeding forward with our district. And the tennis courts themselves. So if, if I remember correctly, from Gerald is that we were asking for the board to approve. Thirty one thousand, two hundred and four dollars for this. So that we can get them to where our young students and our area of community will not hurt themselves. On these cracks.
Question for you, oh, Matt, and and for Gerald, Gerald can't see you.
Oh, I can't hear, I'm driving, I'm sorry.
Okay, a question for you. By us doing this and and just sealing up the cracks. Are we meeting WIA guidelines and stuff just in case about when our students try to go to a WIA? So are we good?
We will be good if we're able to seal the cracks. The bigger question would be, I think Matt just mentioned about long-term solution. Because there's. Deeper issues going on with them, with our tennis courts that we have to figure out a long-term solution.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, first Miss Peterson and then Miss Robinson.
With that, with that statement in mind, how long do we estimate what we're doing will last?
Well, that's the, the, the. Actually, well, um, we have, in front of you right now, we have two different quotes. We have a quote for thirty, thirty one thousand, two hundred and four dollars. They have a quote for seventy four thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. There is. Absolutely no guarantee that if we spend seventy four thousand, eight hundred dollars that. We will. Get nothing more than a fresh coat of paint. Making it look beautiful with sealing cracks and that those cracks will not come back. Next year. There's a great possibility that it could come back. And that's why we are asking to, for thirty one, or thirty one thousand, two hundred and four dollars. Is to, because it buys us at least the rest of this year and potentially into next year. So that we can figure out long-term solution and not. Refilling cracks every year and coming to the board and asking you guys for. More money, we're asking for a little bit of time delay so we can figure out a bigger solution.
So would the, would the crack filler, would it still be that same color blue that's on the tennis courts right now?
Correct.
Ms. Robinson, question?
Okay, so he partially answered my question, but now I have a different question. Do we have any idea of what the big fix is? Because if the big fix is a hundred grand.
Oh.
Okay, because I'm like, why would we spend thirty this year and then have to spend a hundred next year?
Well, to put perspective on this, the last quote that we got, which was. I think back in. Twenty twenty. To redo the courts, which is the actual bigger process, it was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And always back in twenty twenty.
So I remember part of that conversation, and for some strange, three hundred thousand, a three hundred thousand dollar number keep popping back in my head about something. We were talking about, because it was that seven hundred thousand.
That was to add one more quarter.
But right now we have seven, right? Is it seven courts, right? It's seven courts, and that was to be able to add the eighth.
Correct.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so back to the thirty one thousand. Is the thirty one thousand already projected in the budget?
Not yet, but we have positive, you know, again, whether it comes out of fund forty six, whether it comes out of. Fund ten is a little bit of a. Where, we're gonna. We'll have a fund somewhere, I mean, well, this is one of those things that we're gonna have to look at this current school year as being a year where we do some of these one-off projects. That like this, I don't have an issue with going, it's the recurring cost that you have to look at, but. We can, we should do this and get it taken care of, and then again, have a longer conversation with. Funding that. The the actual reconstruction of the test part.
So for big, for clarity, then the thirty one nor the seventy four. Have guaranteed any type of warranty associated with. It happening again a year or so later.
Correct. This is just to. Make it safe for our.
Yeah.
Community and for our students.
Ms. Walker?
Would this be something that we would do right now at this timeframe or do it after winter?
Try to get it done as soon as possible. Now, that's not saying because we are in the middle of their busiest season that we can get them here. But.
That would be our dream.
It would be, it would be one of those projects where. They're looking to stretch it in the past ten, I see them into the spring. I would. Ask that this would be done in, at spring, so that way during our springs, spring sports, it would be better.
So that was what I was about to ask you, after Lisa's question, like, can we make it through the winter? And then do it so then maybe we'll get a little bit more time on it than if we do it in the winter and have it expand and all that?
Well, the, the thing is that we still have tennis. Now, and into the fall. And if we can do it now, so that our students are safe currently.
Yeah.
It's kind of a catch twenty-two, but again, there is no guarantee that contractor can get out here this season yet.
Okay, um, question, Gerald, Matt, you guys, is there anything else that any other fixes or Band-Aid approaches that we need to do with the tennis courts? While we're trying to put this motion together, are there any other dollars that you potentially may need in order to do it? Because I actually went over there on. Saturday, I walked past the tennis courts and stuff, and I saw people playing and everything, took a look and every other, so the reason I know that they were blue. But is there, is there anything else that we potentially may need to do?
I'll leave that to Gerald.
To my knowledge, no. I walked the court, the courts a few weeks ago with. Both Coach Matusic and Coach Hugh. And so what Matt had brought forth to the board today addressed a lot of those concerns. I think the bigger question just looms, how do we develop a plan for, to really address the the deeper issues with the court?
Okay, when's the last time the courts have been addressed or? Any maintenance or any, anything that's transpired with the tennis courts, Gerald?
My, my understanding was when the field house got built, that's when we lost one of the tennis courts. So we went from eight to seven. And one of the issues that's been ongoing is there's a. A water pipe or something that goes underneath the tennis courts, because it drains out on the other side. And that causes a lot of the issues that we're dealing with, especially with winter. The expansion from, you know, the ground freezing and different things like that. And so that larger number that Matt shared back in twenty twenty or twenty twenty one would address all of that. But like I said, for right now, we're. This is the best option we have available. To put a Band-Aid on it until we're in a position to properly address a more long-term solution.
Alright, cool. So I just like I said before, I just wanted to make sure that we would still look good within WIAA, just in case if we ended up hosting or doing anything. Because I've just signed off on our WIAA sports. So. Alright, any other questions for Mr. McGregor and Mr. Russ in relationship to this project? Here you can see, would someone like to make a motion, please?
I'd make a motion to approve the tennis court repair project with Munson Tennis Court Division in the amount of thirty one thousand, two hundred and four dollars.
Alright, thank you very much, Ms. Walker. Motion has been made, we have a second?
I will second Dr. Beadle.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peterson. Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion, any further discussion, rather? Here you can see not all in favor with raised hand and or eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here you see now, uh, mostly carries six two zero. Alright, thank you, Matt, and thank you, Gerald.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For real, get back there and tell you. Alright. So let's go on to our item number J, approval of instructional technology purchase. I believe that would probably miss, miss Turner.
Yes, it's I, I am, I keep the very detailed, negative summary, so I, I won't go through. All those, all those pieces, but so just through our, our budgeting process and cycle. In our discussions with Kevin and, and trying to make sure that everybody has the tools that they need. The math teachers, I will be honest, so Dana Rosman is online and she's been asking for two years and we've kind of been saying like, well, we'll try, we'll try. And so I think in looking at the budgets this year and with, with Kevin and trying to figure out. You know, how we can balance all of our instructional needs, but then that just is beyond laptops and Chromebooks. And so we think that we might have a, a plan to kind of refresh the instructional technology. For those rooms that were not touched by referendum, and there are quite a few. So, so looking to, to do that, and so we're going to. Do the, do the math rooms, which is a requirement for us to be able to participate in the deals program. It was a, it was a deal with the devil that we made, and that's our computer science program, so we are. Definitely behind the times in terms of technology and what we're asking our teachers to teach computer science on is. Not great, so, so we, the costs of the flat panels have come down, these panels. Five years ago, when we're purchasing interactive throws, were ten grand, and so we've been like, oh, that. So, and so we did the interactive short throws. And, and now the technology has just gotten, whether it's just proliferated the market. And, you know, new line tends to be kind of the industry standard, they're by far the best product out there. Their price point has come down so greatly that the difference between the sixty five and the eighty six inch was nominal. And so, but we could go home, and Andy Hayes did the math on it. And I think I, I told you it would be, it would be many, many years, I think, the equivalent of about thirty six years of life. So I will not be here by then, so don't hold me to it, but the, the support, the training. Everything is that comes along with the new line, makes it probably the, the best way to, to go and.
So it couldn't last that long, but it'll be obsolete.
I would.
About five years. Five years obsolete.
Started with projectors, right, on whiteboard, and that was state of the art, so believe me, because when I first started. One of my missions was to buy televisions and mount them on the walls, and we were talking massive CRTs and you could see these bolts on the walls. So like, and then, and then my, my biggest AV budget lines was overhead projectors, so. Yes, and so, so and then repairing those, but and then we've moved to then ceiling, you know, mounted projectors and then. Now we're interactive, you know, short throw projectors where you can touch them and then peanuts can do ten finger touches and things like that. And so that's what the middle school teachers are using. And then, and this would be that next iteration, so.
Of course, well, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Miss Peterson.
I, and I, I was just listening to what you said as it relates to price, you know, that's my favorite part of the conversation. And I don't like the big forty six thousand dollar numbers, so I had already calculated what are these things and the cost for them individually. And they only come to about thirty one hundred dollars, which I already initially thought it was a great. Price considering, but when you said that two or three years ago, they were over ten thousand dollars, is that what I understood you to say?
Yeah, and much smaller too, like, there was just, and I, and I think that, that the technology, the chips, everything, you know, you look at that. You know, that.
So these are the latest models and not the ones.
They're not, yes, last year's models, no, so these are, these are the latest models and. And I think that in terms of, we had Carla Van den Boom, who's our, our rock star K four teacher, we had her come and take a look at them. And Andy was sure that, that she was gonna want a short throw projector just because of. Just because, and then we had the trainer come to, to kind of give us a little demonstration, not the official one. The trainer come to, to kind of give us a little demonstration, not the official one, but we had Dana there and, and I was there, my team was there and um Jason Sadowski, math teacher was there. And gave a demonstration and Carla, just the things that she can do with it. So I would. Um if we go forward with the purchase, I will gladly invite you in to, to see the magic that they're going to be able to do. Um the mount, so some of the costs is, is you were looking at is it's kind of skewed, the elementary ones, the four K and the K. Um will be on a mount where they have a remote where it can raise and then lower. Um Carla is a tiny person anyway, so um but um but. Um God forbid somebody who's my height have to go in there and teach, you know, it's like we could raise up a little bit, but it also can go down for the littles to, to touch and to, to manipulate to do things. So. Um it's a, it's um the uh the ability to um use it as kind of like a standalone device and the, some of the apps and the uh projection. I am excited about the um the idea that we can actually do um some kind of like conferencing in so we can use these projectors. Or these televisions, sorry, um when we're like, if we're gonna do some parent education on how do you, how to get it skyward, do these things with. You know, our, um things, uh there's an ability for us to kind of do this big conference, you know, kind of uh thing. So it's um, it's, it's good stuff.
Right.
So I guess my question is this, so we're gonna uh. Give fifteen of these, so uh. Eight at the high school, middle and high school and seven at the elementary school. So. Shouldn't we end up with more in the middle and high school?
Um, well, uh because, so when I, and to be honest, um what uh with the, the new adoption of the math curriculum, um and Dana would echo this. Um it lends itself really, really well to um to the interactive technology and being able to, to have the calculator up there. You can just do. All sorts of things um in terms of math. Um English and social studies, um it's a little bit different beast. Um so right now, um I think I'm not saying never, but right now, what would lend itself, they're okay with the, with the whiteboard and the projection. Um right now, the way that, the way that they are doing their, implementing their curriculum and teaching, they're okay. So um so the uh, the. The other classrooms up at the elementary school where they would benefit, again, you know, I think in terms of the, the pieces that we measure our metrics on, like student engagement and the ability to use our. Curriculum to the fullest. Um at the elementary school, we would touch the rest of those elementary school classrooms next year. Uh depending upon where we end up budget-wise, I do have some dollars. I work really, really hard to make sure to find efficiencies and things like that. What I would do is I would try to uh get those other, the social studies and the um. And the um English teachers and then a couple of the science teachers' classrooms, those ones that weren't touched, I would try to get them on. I would be able to buy a couple a year. And then we'd get them on a cycle to get them up.
So question on, what, what if we just wanted to just do everything at once? If we've got the money and the budget for this year, knowing that we're gonna be really, really tight the following year, what would that look like?
So I have, I have budgeted, um so well, you can, you can extrapolate from the quote, I didn't prepare for that, but um but you can see the price is what it is. And I said. Don't I get a discount for fifteen? And she's like, nope, the discount's baked in. So I try, I try. And so um but I think the uh. Um we have uh next year, it'll be to do. Um let's see, it'd be first, second, third, fourth, fifth, so five grade levels um would be um, it'll be just shy of a hundred thousand. So. Um and I have that in my budget, um provided we have our, you know, our um replacement cycle. You know, for our, our Chromebooks and our, and our teacher laptops. So because, like I said, because of the ECF and the S R dollars purchases, uh we don't need. Those, those funds right now um to, to buy Chromebooks. It would be, it would be not smart, you know, and um because we're, we're in really good shape. And so um. So then we would then try to reallocate those dollars then to push it toward instructional technology, because these would be. These are things that we wouldn't be able to afford to purchase, you know, with, you know, outside of, you know, if I, if I had to buy a thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars of the Chromebooks, which I do often. Um you know, we wouldn't be in a situation where we would ever be able to afford. I could buy one or two a year. Yeah, and so.
Was any other questions in relationship to this? All right, then uh would someone like to make a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of fifteen eighty-six inch new line flat panels for classrooms. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year in the amount of forty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars.
All right. Thank you very much, Miss Aaron. Do we have a second?
I'll take it now, Nina.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded. Don't worry about this on video. All right. Any other uh discussion? All right. All in favor, raise hand and or aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's the mostly carries six, two, zero. All right.
Thank you very much. I uh we look forward to inviting you in. Um I think we should invite you in to go see what it looks like in a fourteen classroom and then also a. Middle school science and maybe a computer science math classroom.
I did a pre, I'll, a pre walker and a post walker.
You bet.
Here, we get to play with.
I will play with.
Two, so we had a, a, a large excessive common school fund, so. Um Sam Spoker, who's our middle school staff teacher, is going to be teaching in the maker's space off of the library. So. Um that is a ceiling that is not very uh projector friendly. So I said, ooh, what a perfect opportunity. So as it follows law and procedures, it's in the library. So um since she has that, so she's going to be using one and then I have another one in the library that will be used it. So.
First, we can do the giant.
Oh my goodness, it's, that's, it's so great. Yeah, I, yeah, you can come in each.
Yeah, the only other thing I wanna say about that whole thing is, you know, we have gone so far from the technology and stuff. I mean, I, I used to love being the one to be able to clean the chalkboard and stuff and now I'm looking at it. Oh, chalkboard, man, what's going?
Let's think of how excited I was to get the Commodore sixty-four in the classroom. So I could only imagine with these seats still like.
They're huge, they're huge too.
Except for the fighters on Saturday. All right. All right, let's go up to our next item. Let's go on to our uh staff retention report. Uh Mr. Fleming or Ms. Jackson?
Ms. Jackson will be running this part of the programs.
All right.
All right, good evening. Um so let's see, employee retention quarter one contains uh data for April twenty twenty-three, May of twenty twenty-three, and June of twenty twenty-eight. There's an exit survey. He points, these are the, I said, you wanna keep in mind that that's data to you on the next slide. So uh the first viewpoint is once HR has. Registration, transitioning employee is sent via emails and. In the event that the HR is absent at the time of the resignation, uh the exit survey survey is sent within twenty-four, forty-eight hours. So the concession verbiage that is sent to all employees reads, your fate will feedback regarding your employment is out. It's a good problem here. The exit survey is anonymous. The only information regarding your position that's gathered is the building and position that you are employed. Please take a few moments to uh complete the exit survey at an autumn summer and it takes about two minutes to complete. Uh the exit survey. The exit survey information is collected and qualified and surveyed in which that uh there's a link at or. A QR code that is sent to the transitioning. So this information is come from uh compiled of twenty-four resignations, um only thirty, thirteen responded, which is fifty-four percent uh respondents. Um keeping in mind that only eight resignations are non-instructional employees. So. Um the information that I did, did gather for the eight resignations, which are non-instructional employee, there may be uh maybe like one or two that ended up completing. Most of the data that I uh collected were from teachers. Uh. So and also the, when you hear me talk about en- environment and culture answers, they're not interchangeable. Environment is meaning that uh facility conditions in which the employee works, or the culture is meaning behaviors will be. Or the way of employment. And please keep in mind that all, all questions are optional.
Um so the packets that you have in front of you and what you saw on board book, we did have it by month. Um and so what you're seeing now, we, we collapsed it into um. Each slide basically covers a three-month period. So you're getting more data in each slide, but if you add them all up, it, it all equates, but it could just lead you to. It's a little different than the version uh.
So the question, question number one that is in the exit survey is asking uh the transitioning employee, what is your job role? Uh the answer choices, we had one that want, that stated none of the above. We have seven teachers, uh we have one educational assistant, we have one custodian. Um two health office aide and one person anonymous. Question number two, at what, at which location do you work? It's a second question in the exit survey. Uh the answer choices are uh. And let me go back, I'm sorry. Uh there were thirteen answered and nobody skipped this question. Um choices, answer choices are none of the above, one employee. Uh two employees stated that they worked at the elementary. There was one employee that uh stated that they worked at the middle school. And then there were eight employees that uh stated that they worked at the high school. And then we have one person that would uh prefer not to have said working.
So, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. So with none of the above, would that be ASC, would that be administrative staff?
Yes, that, okay, so when it says none of the above, that may be uh could be like a, not even a custodian, but just maybe somebody that uh. Maybe worked uh a non-instructional. Not quite sure exactly what position that is, but it wasn't a teacher. Uh I wouldn't say that it wasn't a teacher, they just heard not to answer.
So I'm not, I think you, I think she's referring to the other question from the one you're saying, so. That one.
Right. Yeah, cause I was just kind of wondering like the none of the above, like, okay, so that right there, I, I get or whatever, but then. When the second question, that's the one I was asking.
Yeah, so I guess maybe they could be in multiple buildings.
Right, or administrative or ASC building or something.
But we did remember when I talked about it originally, they, these options, these uh questions are uh optional. So they may have preferred just not to say exactly where it worked. We don't know because you know, it is anonymous to a certain degree.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right. All right, the next slide. What is your primary reason for leaving the school district? There were twelve that answered and one person skipped this answer. Um three chose none of the above, um five employees, new employment opportunity, um two employees stated. The reason for leaving is wages and one is the benefits.
Some sort of reason, unless my math is wrong, could you go back? Eight, ten, eleven.
Yeah.
So is, oh, well, as twelve answered and one skipped, so, so, so it's only eleven. Okay, all right.
They do have the option to skip if they wanted to skip the question. All right, but. What was the most satisfying part of your job? Uh eleven answered, two skipped. Answer choices, there were nine employees that stated that it was students and then there were one that colleagues and then there. One employee that stated that it was the environment. Question number five. What was the least satisfying part of your job? And so there were ten that answered and three have skipped this, this question. And the answer choices are five employees uh said that it was the culture. There was one employee that stated that it was the environment. Two employees stated that it was wages. And then there were two employees uh that stated it was administration. Did you receive enough training and support to do your job effectively? There were thirteen that answered and there was no one that skipped this question. And two choices speak. Uh six employees said yes and four employees said no and three employees said somewhat.
So a question I have like for these, was there an option for them to leave comments? Or any other questions or?
No, I didn't do it that way this time because last year when we talked about things, there was a lot of feedback and that. I think that it was requested that we have more data collected rather than feedback.
I think probably would like, I don't know, I probably think we'd probably like to be able to have not only that, but also some of the narrative uh aspects of it as well too, so we can kind of find out. You know, because some of these things, there may be some things that we could. Address, make some changes to um or whatever have you. So yeah, so I, I guess potentially in the future, then if we could have it to where we have the data itself, but as well as the, the comments as well.
Receive insightful and constructive feedback from your supervisor or manager regarding your performance. Thirteen answered, nobody skipped the question. And the answer choices are five employees stated yes. And then five employees stated no and three employees stated sometimes.
Oh, with this one, it seems like maybe there needs to be. Some professional development with management. So that they are providing more feedback if, if this is accurate. Yes.
Oh, the other thing too is, is this, that I think would actually would actually be helpful for us as well too, and actually for you as well too. If it was broken down, if we know. That the ones wasn't high school, was the middle school, was the elementary school or whatever and stuff, because again, each one of the buildings is very, very unique. Different leadership, different things that happen. So if we could have kind of known. Was the high school, is the middle school, like the first slide was, it was like, it was like seven or eight of them from the high school out of the thirteen or whatever. Um or whatever. So if we could have actually kind of followed that as well too, I think that would have been helpful.
She should have access to that entity type question. Again, I wanted the employees to also know that this is somewhat um anonymous. Yes, and it made them probably. Confident with answering the, the survey because in the past, what has happened is that um employees are reluctant to. Answer the questions because they don't wanna be identified. So I, I to make it as basic as possible. Or just for the sake of gathering, collecting the data from the employees at the time that they're transitioning, why they're leaving.
So I mean, I guess. In order to allow that to happen, still kind of give us more of the data that could be helpful for us, maybe if it's not broken out by month, since there's only like a couple people a month. But if it's just uh compiled over. Over the course of a year and then we see what it shakes out to, that could help with some of the anonymity, but still give us an idea of, because I. In Survey Monkey, you should be able to see respondent one. Responded high school and also responded no to this question.
Pretty much the same thing.
Not, it's, it's.
It, it's big.
Survey Monkey is. So I mean, that's why I said she should have access to that information, even if it's not provided to us. But if anonymity is a bit of a consign with that. Then, like I said, compiling it all to try to help with that, but still giving us the data that, that would be needed.
Yeah, so next time you do your.
I mean, this specific question, does anybody else find it very interesting that five answered yes and five answered no and somewhat? I mean, that's almost even. And that's just a very interesting question to have such a even answer.
Right.
And see, and, and so. You don't, I mean, we're giving a survey. I mean, I take survey spork all the time, half the time, yeah, check, check, check. I mean. We're using this for, for something that I think that we want it to be more of, but it's just not gonna happen.
We'll see, but here's.
You, you want this great thing, but, but you're only getting what they give you and they're not giving you very much. So how can you make any judgments based on it, especially this question with. Such a broad average answer to such an important question.
See, but here's the other part though, it's another piece of that though, Lisa, I can see exactly where you're coming from, but you know what, would it have been interesting if, if the five knows where the high school, out of the five?
Right.
You know, so then that way would be like, okay, so now.
Right.
We could zero in and be like, huh, well, maybe we need to look at something, maybe it's high school or maybe it's the middle school or maybe it's the elementary school or whatever have you.
Or interest, if it was some of each and each. Right, so I, I mean, it's just, that would be interesting, but for this specific question, I just think the broad uh range of answers in such a small pool is interesting.
Well, hopefully um we only have a short period of time left with. People needing to take this survey, so we can always compile the end of the summer, you know, where we have that. Or your base and then we'll see if there are any patterns that develop, you know, how to. Or your base and then we'll see if there are any patterns that develop, you know, out of this data plus whatever happens in July or August.
Nobody got to see wheel spinning. Anything you need to, you want to add?
I raise our surveys, right? Yeah, said they want to say they got to skip him or not, yeah. Must said everything, so.
Chris Megan.
The issue with um a survey that's asking. Almost like um steering toward what negative things are happening at the campus. I would like to see something that kind of, you know, maybe more open to, I, I guess it's kind of harder to get. With more open-ended questions, you know, what would have been your, your best, um. What are some of the best things that have happened at Brown Deer for you? And then maybe.
Is there those questions?
But they gave them the, the answers. I'm just saying something that's, that's. More narrative or whatever or more, and I know that gets harder.
Like some comment section.
Right, it, so. And I don't know if they didn't have that, but yeah, like a comment section or something, because. Like Lisa said, it's like, okay, you, you know, with any poll that you do. You're gonna get some people who are. You know, like if you have a, a Liker scale that has one through ten, you have some people who will never give a ten. Some people who will only give a one. Some people who will only be in the mid, you know, so when you think about these type of, of, I'm like, what's the purpose? Bottom line, it's like, what's really the purpose? I don't really see. Where these surveys are doing what we intended for them to do. Which is to provide some real, um. Feedback, like Lisa said, it's like, okay, so you got five people that say yes and five people that say no. You know, it's, it's just, it's just not, and then the numbers are so low of the feedback that we get. Um, maybe also it might be better instead of trying to do, you know, month by month. Maybe, okay, let's see what we can get. In the, in the six months or twelve months or whatever, let's see if after people have retired. They can give us some feedback, not immediately. Because they might feel like they're still being um identi- that they're identifiable. And that's just, I'm just talking out loud.
What the circumstances of them.
Was that the exit surveys are intended to be included on a quarterly basis. And it speaks volumes when it says employee retention. So you're getting in front of um issues uh. Before an employee uh decides to resign. And we're also at the very beginning of collecting this type of data because last year, this type of data was not available when I was in it last year, so we kind of. Was on a, you know, a, a, a three-legged chair, so now this gives us a little bit more um. Information or uh to be reviewed to, like I said, to get in front of uh retention.
So this is a climate study, it's not an exit study.
It could be used as, as both.
But what is it? Is it climate or exit? So if this is the exit interview, it's not the same as getting a climate before they retire. It's after they have made, they have made a decision to retire, correct?
But we do know, yes, absolutely, I do agree with you, but we do know that what happens is when teachers society design. Then we do have other teachers that climb on board, but not ma- not necessarily making the resignation at the same time, but they. Think, well, futuristic, we are probably will make the decisions if I'm gonna resign at a later date. And if somebody has uh influenced another employee. To thinking that the way they think, they think, then this gives us the opportunity to get in front of that decision.
So, so you're saying with um, that what you can do is look at, okay, we have an issue with climate. Or with the environment, and so now what we're gonna do is we're gonna, or with the administration, what we're gonna do, so.
I think, if I can, I may add, um, when we. Uh, continue to engage in the strategic planning process. My, what you're looking for, um, or the will come to light in a um. A survey that we, the intention at the, at the, at the moment, under cultural engagement, on strategic planning process, of which you will see. Uh, on the day of the board retreat is, the thought process right now is to um. Partner with a survey, um, school perceptions, for example, I'm just using them as an example, uh, to. Um, administer a survey to our staff in October, um, create that as an opportunity for baseline. For how, how teachers are doing or feeling around cul- climate and culture in just the first month of school, so we, we get through September. We administer a survey in October, we review the data when it returns. Um, and we take some opportunities to see what is it that we can be proactive around before we then give a second survey. Uh, around the April, May-ish timeframe. And then that gives us an opportunity to compare our first set of data with our second set of data. And then plan, correct, pre and post.
Pre and post.
And then plan for the upcoming school year.
It's very different than this, I think, I think when we set out. And having the conversation, and I can always just think of, it was Stacy, who put it out there that. We really want to get a read on why, but people want, what are their feelings? The school perceptions, I agree, is getting more at what you are asking for. And you can go beyond the climate and culture, you can go. Provider, you can go into, you can get along, you can get into all of the stuff. That really kind of gets at the feel of the history. Thing, those questions I'm hearing you say, but this is exit, this is good information.
In the beginning, this is certainly what we asked for, and as we're reviewing it and making thoughts and comments and statements. I think one of the um things that have come up, I think Dr. Vito says this early on. That if we can have some more, the opportunity for them to do some writing. On the survey, that is helps with the understanding. On individually, what people are feeling and thinking. But I think that this is a great start, you're right, Stacy suggested it and you guys came through with it, and so we certainly appreciate that. Um, and as we're thinking about going forward and, and continuing. Essentially continuing these as exit interviews, we can consider putting someplace where they can.
So that way we have, so that way we have the qualitative and quantitative data to be able to look at everything, so yeah, perfect.
I'm just gonna add to that, the other thing we are doing now is we are um tracking the. The, the sentiment of the resignation letters, if available, but there's something that's expressed in there. Um, just as a note to ourselves so that we know, you know, people have reasons, like, again, sometimes people are resigning for completely. Unrelated reasons to expect at all, and sometimes there are specific things that they. And then, you know, I think one of the things we've talked about, we've seen the resignation letter, but then to have that. In a place where you can actually, once again, just to kind of remind yourself of what's the, if there's any. Thoughts, again.
Are all for the themes.
Right, right, so we, so we've been compiling that as well as time goes on, and I think with all this stuff, it does like the data, you know, as we get more data. It will be more um, meaningful, you know, it's like when you only have thirteen people responding.
Yeah.
And it's a mix of, you know, uh, good and bad, and some, you know, indifference, it's gonna change over time and. You know, like I said, I think a really good look would be at the end of the summer, but basically our staff, we said, we look at the, the folks who chose to not return. What is, is there any sentiment in that, in that group of people and, you know, it's simple. Even hopefully it's only thirteen people, maybe hopefully nobody has done the survey anymore, but if they do, at least we'll be able to add that to the.
And again, like I said, I appreciate the report. I just think that, like, like Anita said, getting toward, or like I said also. More of a narrative of. What's really going on, like I said, we get some things in the letter. And then maybe sometimes people don't, I just think that, you know, even with these surveys, that it's, it is kind of tough for people to be. Honest about where they are, just touch. But I do have a suggestion for the, the. The new surveys, you know, almost having, um, when the first survey comes out, maybe. Having some type of um, interaction um between employees, kind of like a, um. So that they can meet each other and open up and we. Get a chance to know, you know, who they're working with, some type of way, might make it a little. Easier to get the feedback in the beginning, you know, collaboration.
Yeah, uh, and you know what, and we're sorry, Ms. Jackson, you know, we have totally taken you out of the, of your presentation. Uh, but yeah, please, please, please continue, I'm so, I am so, you know, and I am the one that started all of this, so like my fault, I apologize. But please continue.
Next question in the exit ser- exit survey is what expect, uh, what aspects of management and leadership, such your supervisor and. Eight employees answered, five employees skipped this question. The answer choices were, two employees that support, one. Communication, one employee stated availability, employee. Said attentiveness. And the next question on the exit survey, if you are going to another school district. Five employees answered, eight employees skipped. The answer choices are.
Interesting.
Well, that, that one right there was pretty tough.
That's.
Although I think it said something that eight skipped though.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
That's, that's a bit what we're saying, that's why we all kind of, right. Wonder what that was all about.
Yeah. Well, maybe they're not all going to another district.
Yeah. Right, yeah, that is true too.
Yeah.
So because if you got five, and then if eight said, that's thirteen, so that's the thirteen, so yeah, there we go.
Questions that were answered in the exit, I'm sorry, exit survey. Eight of five teachers, so.
And what's, what this stands out for me is that even though only four of them. Them answered, only one of them talked about wages. And that's always one of our greatest conversations. And it's the same right here that. That wasn't the biggest concern with the majority that answered, the culture. It's the biggest concern.
Now, that's what that's saying.
That's what I mean.
And that's the survey, however, when Kevin and I are having numerous conversations. While you're leaving.
Right.
Wages comes up first.
And, and that's the.
Goes, well, if you pay me X. We'll say.
And that could be the difference between a survey. With people that are still in place and a survey with people that are gone. Because probably if we be honest here, the people that are gone, do they really care, to be quite honest. What's still happening at the school, because they're gone, so wages doesn't matter to them.
Nothing, nothing.
Nothing really matters, and they're, they're going to do this out of courtesy. But is there really any heart into answering the questions, the, the way someone that is still here?
Well, everybody, everybody gets this survey within a short period of time of them dying out. Obviously, those who died in April, May, usually finish out the school year, so they're still here.
Right.
And they may be born best out, if you're not doing it in August, then you're since due and maybe it's a different, you know.
Oh, I will say, can I, uh, like, make a recommendation? Cuz I know we still have, how many more slides left? About ten? Let's go for it. Oh, come on, okay, alright.
Yeah, last final question in the exit survey. If you ask, would you recommend. Thirteen answered, nobody skipped, and the answer choices, nine said yes, four said no.
They don't like the culture, but they'll recommend.
Necessarily, because the four who said culture could have been the forty.
This is true.
Very good point.
I would, I was like, okay. Yeah, alright.
I think what's important is, um. As we look at, as we look at making a distinction between the exit survey and a. Open slash climate survey, understanding there is a, a culture and climate, right? Um, as we look at potentially partnering with a company for a survey that gives us very valid and reliable data. Uh, it would be important for uh the board to think about a, a question base. Um, so what question are you comfortable with, or what question would you like to see on this survey? Whether you are getting your questions answered, um, as it relates to, um, a pre and post. So it's a survey for, for the staff. I do have a proposal from school. School perception, that doesn't mean that's the company we have to go with. Um, but I'd like to be able to be responsive to what it is, what is it that, purpose of it, one. Let's define the purpose, um, and two, what exactly are you looking for from a survey? So when we bring this data back, um, it is being responsive to what you're looking for. Or what you would like for our staff to be responsive to.
I have a question. Yeah, so are you just looking at this bringing, um, the school perceptions to? Do, did it type of for discussion, or are there other? Platforms that you're thinking about?
So, um, school perceptions is one, and then there's a Gallup survey, um, that is a tool that is, um. Housed through CISA six, um, that has been recommended in our strategic planning process. And so one of those, those are the two that I'm familiar with at this point, if anyone is familiar with any others, um. Staff engagement surveys that might be out there, I'm open and we can look into, you know, some. Um, contacting the company and getting proposals for them to be able to administer the survey, um. Uh, give the back, the data back to, you know, and review and analyze the survey, then we will review it and decide what we would like for our next steps to be. Um, in that process in between October and then April, when staff take the second turn.
So I'm just gonna put a shameless quote out there, we've used, uh, school perceptions, it does give you, um. It gives you a chance to actually figure out what it is that you want to measure, it'll even draw down to the questions that you'd like to see. At, for all of your employees. And the, yeah, that a discussion can be had. And some agreement can, um, uh, come about with what that looks like. To get at some of those things that you. You wanna see.
And one of the other beautiful pieces about school perceptions is the data is, is nationally normed. And it's also, um, compares us to other districts that are just, where the composition is very similar to ours. Um, in size and demographics. Um, and those are the two primary ones, where they will compare us to other districts, so it is nationally normed, which be. Um, it'd be interesting to see what that looks like. And how we compare to other districts like ours across the, across the nation.
There's that hope survey that's. Hope survey, HR. Of the whole survey. That hurts some districts here. We moved away from that though.
Uh, any other questions for Ms. Jackson or Mr. Klemic? Or, uh, Dr. Kelsey Brown, related to our. HR retention results.
I just wanna reiterate that. If we are looking at school perception to look at comments and look at culture, that we do not. Put this to the side, like we continue to conduct the exit, um, survey as well. Or do you? Yeah, what's, uh, what the additions that we.
Alright, thank you very much, Ms. Jackson. Alright, let's go on now to our strategic planning update.
Yes, uh, as I indicated a little earlier, uh, we were scheduled for a leadership training with Dean Marie from CISA six on Monday. But we will reschedule that training, uh, for our lead. For our leads on each key performance indicator, uh, our leads are me, uh, around culture and engagement, Ms. Ramos. Uh, Dr. Glass and Mr. Klemic, and then other directors are, um. Falling under the guise of, of their case, their key performance indicators. Um, I did reach out to Mr. Nicey last week, um, to see where he is with, remember he was revising. Revising the work that you all did, um, two Mondays ago now with the mission, uh, vision and potentially the values. In terms of any revisions with that, I've not heard from Mr. Nicey just yet. Soon as I receive the information, I will share it with you. Um, again, we will have a, a very, um. We'll have a draft version of the continuous improvement plan, uh, at the board retreat for us on August fourth. And I think what's important is for us to begin thinking about, um, two community events, uh, where we can share the strategic plan with the community. Uh, so that they do get an opportunity to provide feedback. So we do wanna get dates on the calendar for that. Um, and ultimately, um, get us to, you know, final improvement, uh, final approval. Of a strategic plan for the, uh, for the upcoming studio. And if there are any questions I can answer, I'm.
Or questions? Alright, thank you very much. Let's move on to our next item here. Okay, let's go on to, uh, discussion of companies for organizational review.
Yes, and, uh, I will. At the request of the board, I think probably back in April, uh, we were asked to solicit. Uh, proposals from two companies who can conduct a organizational audit. Time for position descriptions and direct reports and supervise, people supervisor, supervise and who they supervise. And so before you, you have the two companies, um, one is to the tune of seventy thousand dollars. Um, and the other is to the tune of, I believe it was a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
One fifty-five an hour?
One fifty-five an hour, uh, with that one fifty-five an hour, I just want us to always be mindful of. Because we've not engaged in this work before, um, you, one can never, and, and I use the strategic planning process just as a, um. As an example, you never can anticipate how much time these kinds of, um. Exercises or activities are going to take. So while it says one fifty-five, the question becomes, how much time is it going to take? Uh, for the company to be able to, um, engage us in that work and then understand. They will be meeting with our staff, obviously, to find out who does what and on what day, when, you know, that kind of thing. And, uh, while we are being consumed with them doing this work, know that, you know, something has to give, because we can't do it all. Everything all the time. I'm not saying it's. I'm, I'm on, I'm on the fence with it to be, and it's not my decision, but I just know that there are other priorities. Um, that we can be focusing on in the area of academic achievement that, um. I would like for us to consider as a priority. That's my commentary. I know it is the board's decision. Um, but that's where we are with the two proposals we were able to solicit. I think some of you have some level of familiarity. Um, with either one or both of these companies, and so maybe you can speak to the work that they've done, um, and the outcomes of the work. I'm unable to speak to that, obviously, because I'm not going through an exercise as such. On, under, at least under my administration, and I don't know it's ever happened before, um, in this school district around here. So I'll turn it over to the board for a discussion, um, and. Ask you to lead us regarding next step in this process.
Right, um, I'm know I can go ahead and go. Does anyone else wanna say anything before I get started?
But were you not able to get Laura to give you an estimate of about? How long it typically takes for a district of our size?
I didn't, I didn't, I did not specific, um, well, Trina, Trina had the conversation with them, but I, we didn't ask them specific questions. Or that question in particular, what we see. I don't, I'm a sign, we can ask, you know, for if they've done a district outside before. How much time did that take to get a better sense of?
And I just backed in the numbers, just you can see the seventy-two thousand as, um, an, an equal number. And it would be approximately four hundred and sixty-four hours. Or fifty-eight days, eighty-eight hour days. Um, so yeah, it shouldn't take that long, but still you, you just don't know.
So from my perspective in relationship to this, uh. Generally, from organizational design standpoint, generally when you do a new strategic plan, you put all those different things together. You look at your organizational design and see exactly where you're at, uh, where you'd be able to, where you're going to be able to move. Dr. Kelsey Brown's point is Brown, Brown here has never done this, alright? And I think what happens is, is some of the reason what we haven't done is starting to show up in a lot of different areas where we're at. Uh, from a leadership and administrative standpoint or whatever, to, to what we actually really need to do and how we're getting ready to continue. Being to move the district forward, um, so. How does this, how does this help us, right? Alright, so if, if we turn around and we look at exactly kind of where we're at from a leadership standpoint, the directors, who reports to? What are the responsibilities? What are some of these other things? I think that what that does is that trickles down. So if it trickles down from, from the top, everybody understanding exactly what they're responsible for, the job descriptions makes sense. What people are doing, because the other thing too, that we know to happen at Brown there is because we are a small, uh, district. We've got people that wear like five hundred different hats, did certain things or whatever that wasn't even part of their job responsibilities. And we've seen exit interviews and we've seen some of these other things that have said exactly that. Well, I was doing this, but it wasn't something that they were actually supposed to do. They did it because. Oh, well, I just think this is probably something I need to do, or somebody asked them to do something once upon a time, but it wasn't part of their job description. I think what happens in organizations, especially organizations that's our size and have all these different hats or whatever. I think we better, um, everybody needs to understand exactly what they're responsible for, because. If, if you turn around and you evaluate me, and I've been doing three or four things that have nothing to do with my job, but it was something that was. That I've been doing for years, then does that make that right? You can't hold me accountable for it, alright? That's number one. Then number two, that means that something else has gotta be falling through the cracks someplace. Alright, so we really need to make sure that we are covering all of our bases, whether like, like I said before, small district. Big issues, have somebody turn around and look at it from the outside and be like, okay, here you go. This is kind of where you guys are at. Like maybe like this whole thing like with Dr. Glass, I mean, I know we've had the conversation before. Director teaching and learning before supervised the principals, then Dr. Kelsey Brown wanted to supervise the principals. And then we had that whole athletic director thing, and then we've got all these other, like the, everything like with maintenance and stuff like that. I think sometimes, you know what, we're so close to it, we need to have somebody else take a look at it and see exactly where we are. What needs to make, what needs to change and our job descriptions and all the rest of these different things. Are they exactly where we need to be? Like, when was the last time we did an HR audit and stuff, when we looked at all of our job descriptions and some of these other different things? You.
Under my administration.
Okay, so you. It's ongoing process. I mean, I know we've done it with administrative assistance, the blast team has gotten together and they're reviewing it. So I mean, it's not, it, it hasn't been something we've had the time to sit down and dedicate to, but as we go and as we.
Something we haven't had time to turn around and do, because you know what, there's not enough hours in the day. For the people around this table to turn around and be able to do it, hence the reason why you have another organization come in and make sure that they. Are able to look at these different things and stuff and, and make sure we're on the right, we're, make sure we're on the right path, period, point blank. I mean, okay, we spent some money right now, but think about what we may be able to save in the future. So that's, that's, that's what my major piece of this is in, 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 like I said before, another part of my roles for my day job or whatever have you. All of this organizational design and strategic planning and every organization that we do, and we do a new strategic plan, we do a new mission and vision. We turn around and we look at the organization itself. And make sure that the organization is moving in the same direction as the strategic plan that we're trying to turn around and we're trying to put together.
I have a question. So we're, we're doing this, this, um. We're hiring these organizations for the purpose of, um, looking at our form chart.
It's just not only is the org chart, it's.
I'm, I'm, no, I'm not, I'm not. Okay, okay, I'm just asking, you know, what, what all is it? Because I wanna see if we're spending whatever money. What is the purpose? What is the goal? What are we trying to get to? You know, because what if we pay this money and they're like. Given your staff, given what you have, you guys are operating in the manner that we'd expect for you to run in. And so now we spend seventy-two thousand, so I'm trying, or whatever it is, so I'm trying to look at. What is our, you know, just give me an idea of all of the purposes for, for spending that, that amount of money.
Well, again, just what you just said, say they turn around and they say that, that means you know what, thank you so much. What if they turn around and say, you know what? More than half of the things that you got going on are wrong. And we're still sp, and we're spending this money, we've got positions and all the rest of these different things. So again, it, it's. You know, it, it's.
What appears to be gracious or, um, or, or what seems to be off?
Me too. That's my number one question. What's the problem? Before you can make your plan, what's the problem that you're trying to solve? And I personally think that the organizational chart presented at the April twenty-sixth meeting, and I know that you weren't here for that meeting in person, but. The rest of us, I distinctly remember that we all agree that organizational chart as presented was acceptable at the very end of the meeting. Dr. Brown even asked specifically from Dr. Brown, are we all in agreement that an outside source is not necessary? And all six of us here at this meeting agreed that the organizational chart as presented was acceptable and it was not necessary.
Who, wait, wait, you mean all, wait, who else? Were you there?
At this meeting, yeah.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think that you were here. I think that was the meeting that myself, uh, Northea was, I mean, Dorethia wasn't there.
I might, we had left, but at that meeting.
But I don't.
Things that I felt collectively that we felt that. The lines, as simplistic as it may be, the lines were missing to. Where the leadership connection ran. Something that's easily fixed potentially, but that's what I recall from the meeting.
Right, we, we all agreed that we did not need to hire an outside source, so I won.
Wait, wait, we all agreed to that.
We, we agreed.
Okay, so I got, I see two people said they agreed to, who else?
Yeah, agreed to that.
You said everybody, and, and I'm, and I'm sorry, and I, you know what, and I'll just turn around and I'll just look at it like this or whatever have you. Look at that organizational chart. What do you see that's wrong with that organizational chart right now, Lisa?
Well, I personally don't see anything wrong with it.
Your last name Zalinski?
Well, the organizational chart that we were presented with on paper.
Well, it's here, right here. Okay, okay, I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying, again. What I'm saying is, is when we turn around and we look at it, you said there was nothing wrong, there you go. That, I mean, I'm just saying, if, if we, if we. I thought I was talking first.
Okay, well, I was originally speaking before Anita jumped in and everyone else jumped in, so you go ahead and I'll finish when you're done.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, continue.
Okay, so, so no one's agreeing that we said that we didn't need this outside company? I mean, did we not agree, Felita, Anita, did you not, we at that meeting say when at the very end, Dr. Brown said, so are we in agreement that I don't need to look for an outside source? And we all said, when I agree. I, I would too, I would, I would like to do that too. Because when I get something that says you wanna spend seventy-two thousand dollars to do this stuff, and just in the meeting tonight. These are the things we talked about where I'm sure that we could spend seventy-two thousand dollars. A readiness, uh, college and career teacher for next year, because at the end of this year, we won't have that money anymore. Also, technology for cares department, some of these that she said, and money for tangible items. To me, to spend seventy-two thousand dollars for a company to come in, and let's see. Spend staff time, spend staff resources. Resources that can be used to be doing meaningful work for our students, and I don't consider anything wrong with the organizational chart. So I would like to ask the same question that for Thea did. What is wrong with the Asian return as presented in the organization of who is reporting to?
It is not the chart itself. It's more than, I, I, I guess I need you to understand something. It's more than just the chart, okay? It's the, it's, it's more than just the chart. It's also the job descriptions. It's also the reporting responsibilities. It's also what's, what else is going on in the district. We could turn around and find out that, you know what, there may be a position that we need to have in the district that we don't have, alright? Or we may have positions in the district that we don't need that are kind of one of those positions that don't need, that necessarily that we don't need. You keep going back to the seventy-two thousand dollar number, whatever, we don't know. Let me finish. We do not know exactly what this whole thing, when we talk about, uh, like Laura. In my estimation, I'm thinking it's gonna, only gonna probably be maybe about a hundred hours, maybe a hundred and fifty max or whatever. So what does that run into about fifteen, whether it run into fifteen, between fifteen and twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars? Or something that has never happened before and we don't know, we don't necessarily really know or whatever have you. But right now, we're going through a new strategic plan, we're going through all the rest of these different things, you need to turn around, again, best practice. You can ask anybody that does strategic planning or whatever, best practice, you look at your organization, you look at where your job description is at, you look at where you're at as an organization. And you turn around and you look at it and it's kind of see where you are, where you need to be able to make these changes and everything. And like I said before, Dr. Kelsey Brown already said, and Kevin already just said, they don't have time to do some of these different things, alright? So we bring in somebody with a fresh pair of eyes to be able to take a, take a look at exactly where we are. Again, small district. You've got too many different overlapping things, but some people are doing things that don't have anything to do with their job, alright? So we turn around and we look at that. No one has ever audited, basically have audited what our job descriptions are. You know, Kevin just talked about some of the assistant things or whatever, but what about all the rest of our different positions, alright? We've got people that turn around and leave, and some of those people may be leaving because they're, because. The job that they're actually hired for is not exactly the job that they're doing. That's something that's universal, that's, that's all the time or whatever. So why don't we just turn around, hold on, why don't we turn around? We go back, look at, like I said before, um, we know we got this one that's seventy-two thousand, we got one that's on an hourly thing or whatever have you. Turn around and find out exactly what. How many hours do they really think they do to be able, for them to be able to turn around and take a look at everything that we got going on or whatever have you? Uh, again, it can actually pay for itself, like I said before, you never know until you turn around and you take a look at it, alright? We thought that our mission statement was great or whatever, until we turned around and looked at it again, because now we got a new strategic plan. You never know until you turn around and you look at it, Lisa. Period, yes.
Okay, so. Wouldn't it be plausible or make sense for us to first have, um, our HR person to look at the job descriptions? And see if they are within, which ones are within, uh. You know, where they're supposed to be and which ones appear to be different. You know, because.
Does not have, I will, she does not have time to do that kind of work, sure.
Were you the one that entered or sat with these two? People or got these proposals?
Yes, I was, yes.
And, and when they talked about. What they were planning to do based on the proposals that they submitted, what were your thoughts on? What the, the outline of what they were planning to do? What were your thoughts on that?
My thoughts were that is, if, if, it is necessary. Okay, HR standpoint as far as the structure, environment, job descriptions and job duties and who's reporting to who. Uh, because it has been my experience that it's kind of scattered. Um, and so, um, yeah, that's my thought.
I appreciate that.
Working with these two.
I appreciate that. My, my second question then goes to yourself, Kevin or Dr. Can we? Um, maximize the amount that we would spend as opposed to having it as an open door? If we were to go with the hourly employee, can we maximize that amount saying, basically. We have thirty thousand dollars to do what we're looking to have happen. Was that ever any type of approach with them and can we go back? And our budget stipulates and indicates that we only have thirty thousand dollars, we only have thirty-five thousand, whatever that number may be. Can we go back to them to see? If they would be willing to revise this with a hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour with the maximum of thirty thousand? It still may come in at only twenty-five thousand, but to ma, possibly maximize it. To see if they would even be willing to do anything like that. You are HR and just hearing it come from you. As much as our thoughts and assumptions and what we think as a board that is not in the day-to-day activities. Of the HR department and what it needs to do to ensure the accuracy of all that we're talking about. If I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that this could invariably be very much needed.
So, so one thing I will say, um. From a corporate perspective, neither of the proposals that they submitted would fly. Neither of them have enough detail. Neither of them have enough detail. Um, it should be able to say, we anticipate this many hours for this, 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 and this, that's how much this will cost for that. And all of those details, which neither of them provided. So even if this were something that we were going to vote on tonight, we wouldn't have enough information to be able to do that.
The other piece to this is typically when you are a vetting organization. There's usually another person in the room, maybe somebody or. Who might have, you know, ran some time to kind of sit with you to bring in a different kind of perspective. Because to Dorethia's point, uh, I would have a set of questions to get at what the outcomes are that we are looking for. Uh, in terms of just moving, uh, in this direction, if we have to move in the direction of this right here, right? So I'm wondering if there is a chance or an opportunity for us to set up a second. Uh, interview, which we did it. I will volunteer to sit with you, anybody else, um, should you, uh. Uh, want to, just to do that and to, you know, figure out amongst us, before we set up the second interview, what are the outcomes? What are we looking for?
We're not even at that point. We don't have enough information. Right, so we should have a document of requirements of what we're looking for.
Thank you.
Where they all can respond to the same questions.
Yes.
Get the same information. If they have questions, we can respond back out to them all with the same information. Before we could even get to the phase of trying to do any of that.
Yeah, so again, so what I was getting ready to, what I was getting ready to say is, is that, uh, once we had, once we've, uh, received these or whatever, I actually wanted them. The companies to come in and talk and, and tell us exactly what exactly everything that they would be able to do. And what, what the dollar amount, everything else. But this meeting right here, we already knew it was gonna actually gonna run long because we have our closed session as well too. So I, I did have that part of that conversation saying that, you know what, we need to have them come in and come talk about it, so. My recommendation would be is, is right now, if we could have Ms. Jackson get back in contact with both organizations. All right, have them be able to, uh, now if there's specific questions. And these person wants or whatever, like, you know, what would be the ultimate outcome? How many hours do you think that this has been ready to be able to take you? Some of these other different things, send that information to them, have them be able to get that back to us and then have them come to the board and present. Pretty much kind of like how we did the same thing with the strategic planning companies or whatever have you, and do that same exact thing. So then that way. Everybody can get their questions answered directly from organizations themselves.
And then we as a group can make a decision, whether it is worth pursuing or maybe be just.
I, I guess my biggest thing is, is everybody kind of got caught up on the seven, that seventy-two thousand dollar number. And I'm like, I don't know exactly where that came from because it's not broken down in here or whatever, but when I first saw seventy-two thousand dollars, I was like. Okay, yeah, our organization isn't that big for that dollar amount, but I do think that we had that conversation. To where it was asked, like, how many hours do we think that it probably would be? And it's probably, it takes about a hundred, hundred and fifty hours. To be able to do everything that we need to have done, which will probably run us around in that twenty-five thousand dollar area of that twenty-five thousand dollar range. Or whatever, but so, yeah.
You don't have your knowledge base and experience on something like this, being able to say that, they should be able to do the same thing, and if they can't.
Then you know what, they are the right organization to be. There you go.
But before we bring them back to do what you just said, which was to give us the time, don't we have to tell them what we're expecting so they know how much time it will save? But I thought you said we should meet and then get the questions together. We need to get that together before we do the meeting.
Well, again, everybody can turn around and be like, there's questions that you have, get those and send them to, uh, to Ms. Jackson or whatever have you. Because she can turn around and add that into whatever else that needs to go to the organization.
For the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, because again, yeah.
I'm just wondering, have you ever done an RFP for this in your experience? I mean, because I think that you're really looking for that written. Declaration here, the services we, it doesn't have to be twenty pages, but if we have it. Written out in a, in a page to say, here's what we expect, because that is, that was the only part I was gonna say about the cap, is that. That the key is, I think you have to walk into this whole process exactly what it is you expect, and they deliver it in the time and dollar amount. I go up because they don't want to just cut it off and then they've done this work and they're going to result, so, so it is making sure that. They're all on the same page and your expectations is the same as theirs, and so I, I guess it would be helpful from our end unless Trina. Uh, is, is able to do it. I mean, I think if either, if either Dr. Beetle wants to craft something based on, I mean, because you're kind of leading the charges. Exactly what it is you're looking for, or if you have had an RFP that you've used previously, send that to us and we can use that as a guide to. To craft them, because I, I, I know that, um, in reaching out to a few other business managers, I haven't seen them. These people that I've made contact with that have access to this, that they have done this before, so I, I, I'd choose the right, I would want to get assistance on, you know, where to pull something from. So if you have resources or if you want to have something, and that's the impetus for us, reaching out to the companies again, that would be fine.
So that's what I was going to ask, if we did one before, so I guess my answer is no.
Yeah, we have not.
My other thing would be to say drop it in chat GPT and see what it spins up for you.
And then with that, around the questions that. Board members and I would include cabinet members, maybe, maybe cabinet. Ask some questions as well. I've just created a Google Doc that I'm sending to everyone. Now the questions, like, you're gonna get it like the next two seconds. Send it to everyone and that way all the questions can be noted in one document and everyone, you, some of us might have the same questions, it's already there. So you don't have to put a question there, but, uh, I'm sending that now, uh, so then that gives Trina, uh, some insight to what. Uh, information she can share with the, um, with the companies in terms of what, uh, we're looking for. RFP would be great. I think that's a great idea. But I also want us to just, you know, also consider, uh, with the dollars. Is there a direct correlation to impacting student achievement, which is our ultimate goal in this school district? So is there a relation, is there correlation and maybe there isn't, and we have to be okay with that? But I can think of a whole lot of other things to do from an academic achievement standpoint, um, with the dollars.
Everything that we do is just not all academic, like, you know, the technical scores aren't academic achieve. I mean, so as a, as a district, I'm just saying, listen, this. As a district, we need to turn around and we need to look at this thing from its totality as a whole district itself. The district is more than just the academics, it's our staff, it's facilities, it's all of these different things. So it's bigger than just one piece. We're hoping that everything comes together to be able to make this wonderful picture and. Everything is supported and the resources and everything else to that. So what I'll do is, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll be able to work with Ms. Jackson and, uh. To be able to help draft parts of that and stuff, uh, for that RP, and if you go ahead and the thing that you put together for the questions and stuff for everybody to be able to do that. And then we send it out and here's, and here it is, in a nutshell. We do it, we send it out. If they don't respond or we don't find organizations that turn around and do it, then it'll be something that we'll probably have to turn around and look at ourselves. That's it, but it needs to be reviewed. Period. You always got to do an audit. You always got to do, you always need to do an agency audit. Period. All right. All right, so let's go on to our next item is. Neola Policy Revisions First Reading. That's it. Although, that's a better fact. Do we even have a motion for this one? Nope, we do not have a meeting just because it's the first reading. We gotta approve it, so we'd actually start on our motion, okay? All right, so with that being said, anybody question, mention this first reading for the, uh, Neola Policy Revision?
My only question is, so the document that was provided, that's a summary of what the corrections are. But I know that typically we also can access the policy itself. There was no direct way to do that without manually going in, looking up each of the.
You have to go, you have to log into the platform.
Pull up each one.
To see what the divisions are. But that's not typically how we've gotten. Typically, we've gotten them where it's redlined or.
We don't print them out.
But I, yeah, did I make that up? We, we never got that before.
I think we always got that at the end when we, uh, because it was always like when they made those changes or whatever. They were, they, they put the mark through it or whatever have you, and then they added, this is the new verbiage.
Yeah, yeah, we usually got that with the first reading. It, it's accessible on the platform. You gotta go to, uh, ready for, uh, for review, for the draft policy. It's in there.
I'll have to show you.
Okay, so what do we have to do?
Uh, make a motion to approve the first, uh, the first policy revision, first reading. Well, we'd have also, would anybody like to make a motion? Yeah, the, the motion to the all the policy revision first reading.
I will, Dr. Beetle, make the motion to approve the first reading of the Neola Policy Revision.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Peterson. Motion has been made. Do we have a second? Oh, all right, thank you very much, Ms. Ashley. Motion has been made. Second, uh, any discussions? Have you seen that all in favor, raise hand and or aye? Any opposed? You seen that motion carries six, two, zero. All right, thank you very much. All right, let's go to item number six, War Reports SWSA Legislative Update. SWSA, as we all know, that, um, Act Nineteen has happened, uh, which is. Doing a whole lot of different things in relationship to school districts across the state of Wisconsin. Uh, of course, the number one thing was, was the increase in the per pupil, uh, dollar amount. Uh, the second thing is now is going to be in relationship to, uh. The literacy and the reading, the no standards that, uh, that the districts are gonna have to adhere to from DPI. So those are the two major, those are the two major, uh, items, uh, from SWSA. There's like a million things that come through all the time related to it, but those are the two major, uh, the two major, uh, pieces of information. I'd like to be able to share with the board. All right.
So I have just a few pieces of that, just under, um, also know that couple bills on the floor around. They didn't give us the specific details of it, but around, uh, strip searches for kids. Um, so additional information, or there's a bill on the floor for, for some addition to that, um, Asian American Studies. Um, anti choking bill is on the floor, and then human growth and development, there's a bill on the floor to remove, um. The ability of a non-employee to be part of the Human Growth and Development Committee. And then, um, uh, a bill on the floor regarding library.
Yeah, library material just came yesterday. Was it yesterday?
And I'll just add one last piece around literacy. Uh, we just have to get some thought to it. And I mentioned this before, but I want to put it on the floor again because. We really need to start thinking about what that would look like moving forward if the state decides to adopt the universal screener. Um, then that will create an opportunity for, um, baseline data for all of the districts across the state. Um, for whatever this universal screener might be. They did not give any indication if it's, um, NWEA or MAP or STAR or. Or whatever it might be, but know that that will be a baseline here for us. And with this literacy bill, I, my thoughts around that is. We probably won't have a really good sense of how this bill is going to impact literacy in the state of Wisconsin until the year twenty-five, twenty-six. Now, this is Monica commentary, because the first year implementation is twenty-four, twenty-five. And we all know the implementation of anything that's new, you gotta iron out the, you know, you're gonna be boxing the roads, you gotta iron out the tints. Uh, so just be ready for what that might look like, um, in the year twenty-four, twenty-five, including the potential for adopting new curriculum for reading.
Reading curriculum, that's what I'm saying.
It's a literacy bill as well.
Yeah.
Had to figure out, I'm like twenty-four, twenty-five, ain't none of us gonna be around by then. You said twenty-four, twenty-five, and I'm like, eight.
I would be here to the end of the governor's, uh, four hundred years of, uh, uh, money. All right, okay, so that's SWSA Legislative Update, uh, WOSB.
So, um, fighting for the latest, uh, communications. You guys sound like five minutes, but it'll be twenty-one related to early literacy instruction. And among other things, it's still free to, um, receive office.
Yeah.
Uh, and a coaching program, so, um, that you can. Be the full slate of what comes under that bill when you go to, um, the WOSB website. Additionally, uh, the regional meeting registration opens open and you can learn all about what WOSB has to offer. By going to sign up for one of their sessions, and that is all that I have.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Ed Foundation. We don't break, cool. All right, uh, and Parks and Rec. Okay, all right, let's go on to item number seven, War Plan and Calendar. I'm not gonna read through all of this, but, uh, just know that, uh, our retreat is on August fourth. We have a special board meeting on August eighth, and our other, uh, regular board meeting is the twenty-second. Uh, board members, if you are able to attend any of these other different events that are on here. Uh, please do so, especially related to the school itself, new teacher orientation, teacher week, all the rest of those, uh, different things or whatever have you. Uh, thank you guys for letting us know that there is now an additional Community Vibes on August second. On August second, there's a, the additional Community Vibes, so hope to see everybody there. Bring your lawn chairs and the beverage of your choice.
To the vibes and to your backyard too.
All right, it don't make a difference, you know, my yard bigger than we can, all right, um, so that would have pulled out a lot of your taxes coming from there. Um, so, and with that being said. It should be about, it's so, for somebody to be able to make a motion to go into closed session to discuss. Administration evaluation, personnel matters, and other items.
I could beat off. I would like to motion to enter to close session to discuss. Administrator evaluation, personal matters, deliberate, uh, regarding negotiations. Partying with the B V E A pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes nineteen forty-five. One C T into approved the minutes of January tenth, twenty twenty-three, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. April of November twenty twenty-three, and May ninth, twenty twenty-three, in closed session.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Bacon. All right, uh, Ms. Daniels Ashley.
Beetle.
Hi.
Daniels Ashling. Bacon.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Robinson.
Hi.
Smith. And the vote is six to zero to move into closed session at eight.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, it, uh, members of the community or staff that are interested in going into closed session. But we will be coming back into open session. Um, so with that being said. We can, uh, turn off the video and our audio and individuals, if you'd like to be able to stay, uh, online. You can, but we will be coming back in open session. All right, now we go, our call is going into closed session at eight thirty-one. We break into open session, would, so that was a, was, we need to go back to the vote on Ms. Johnson or?
I would like to make a motion to approve the leave of absence for Clarissa Johnson as presented.
All right, thank you.
Period of one year.
As presented, whatever.
For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, got it.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, Ms. Robinson, motion has been made, do we have a second? Thank you very much, Ms. Peterson, motion made and seconded, or any others further discussion? Eric and Seena, all in favor, raise hand and or eye? Any opposed? Eric and Seena, motion carries six, two, zero, now, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson, motion has been made, do we have a second? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Bacon, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, raise hand and or eye? Any opposed, Eric and Seena, I call this meeting adjourned at ten fifty-five P M, thank you very much for this, uh.